In beautiful King William County. Chris. Well, wait a minute, hold up. I just want to overlook the electronic participation. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for Mr. Moore and to join electronically due to illness.
Any discussion? Chris.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
See you all.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Chris, leave the roll call.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah.
Mr. Garber.
Yeah.
Mr. Moran.
Here.
Mr. Miskowski.
Yeah.
Chairman Hodges.
Here.
All right, folks, I'd ask you to rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, have you reviewed the meeting agenda? Any changes in the, I should say, the amended agenda? Mr. Chairman, if we adopt the amended agenda?
Sure.
Any discussion? Chris?
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
All right. As we get ready to do the citizens' comment period, you have three minutes for each person on non-public hearing matters. Soon she gets the list. And can you read?
Yeah. It's the policy of the board that its meetings be conducted with the highest degree of order and decorum. The board's integrity and dignity will be established and maintained at all times during the conduct of public business, and the board will permit no behavior which is not in keeping with this policy. The soliciting of funds from meeting attendees, the use of threatening or profane language, the failure to comply with time limits, violation of board rules, or other forms of disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. The chair will maintain proper order at all times during all meetings of the board and shall effective removal from any meeting of any person guilty of improper conduct if the offending party fails or refuses to cease such conduct. Speakers wishing to address the board shall clearly state their name. All comments are addressed to the chair. Speakers may address only those matters within the scopes of the board's authority that are not on the agenda for a public hearing. Speakers are allowed one opportunity of three minutes and may not yield any portion of their time to another. Political campaigning, advertising of goods and services, and the like are prohibited. No speaker is to engage in political statements, personal attacks upon members of the board supervisors, county employees or officials, or any other person, use abusive language, discuss matters outside the purview of the board, or publicly discuss matters the board has solely considered in a closed meeting. Clearly state your position, give the facts to substantiate your position, and state the concerns you wish the board of supervisors to consider. If you have a written statement or handouts, hand it to the clerk. Do not hand materials to individual supervisors. If you have specific questions for the board, note that they may not be able to provide an answer immediately during a board meeting, and you are always welcome to contact them personally with any questions or concerns. And the first person is Lisa Roberts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lisa Roberts, and I'm in the Third District. Stephen Greenwood is my supervisor. I'm here tonight to speak on an item that will be discussed later, which is item 10E, Special Event Ordinance. On behalf of the King William NAACP branch serving as vice president, I would like to invite the community to our June Team Celebration. What better way to promote the community and celebrate family and friends than June Team Celebration on Saturday, June 17th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. right here at King William County Courthouse, the green lawn facing Route 30, the old courthouse area. Our opening ceremony will start promptly at 10:00 a.m. I take pride, and the King William NAACP take pride in our community because we believe that we can work better together. I want to personally thank, and also on behalf of the King William NAACP, personally thank the board of supervisors, county administrator, and others who have been working alongside with me and our committee to make this an enjoyable event for all. I believe that if we could come together and work together, we could bring more events to this community as well as tourism. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Betsy Donahue, also of District Three.
Good evening. My name's Betsy Donahue. I'm resident of the Third District. I've been living in King William County for close to 40 years. I'd like to weigh in on the discussion that's been ongoing over several board meetings about the Pum monkey regional library. I'd like to thank the board, first of all, for the past funding of the Pum monkey regional library. It's a very valuable resource for our community, and I request that you continue to fund it. Now, my history, I am a frequent patron of the library. I typically get a book a week at least to read for leisure or information. When I was younger, my children were younger, we spent a lot of time at the library getting books, participating in children's programming, and still, as adults, they prefer to receive books as gifts. So we're a family of readers, and the library is a very important resource. Now, the advantage of a regional library is that I can choose from books that are housed at all 10 of the regional libraries, not just the ones that are in our small library. And nine times out of 10, when I request a book, they have to get it from another branch. And I can ask for books and find them that are books that are nationally acclaimed, so I can keep up with reading the things that other educated people in the country are reading. And if they don't have that book, I can request that they try to acquire it, and they would answer me, you know, if they can or not. I can attend the programming at the surrounding libraries that, for leisure or for educational purposes. This is, this is an advantage, and there are many, many programs in a small county. You know, it's much more beneficial to band together with other small counties and pool our resources and, you know, all of us get the benefit of the group. The library has a community space where we can have meetings, small conferences, larger committee meetings. Children and adults are being tutored. I've seen that happen in the library space after school hours. A lot of, almost always when I go in there, someone is on the internet because, of course, as you know, getting internet at your home in this county is an ongoing process. It's not completed yet. So the library provides the internet for the community. I've also heard from the excellent communications with the, my time, okay. Well, to sum up, I would encourage you to continue to fund a regional library, and if you consider an independent one, please take into account all the benefits of a regional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Relic of District Three.
Hello, my name is Josh Relic. I also live in District Three. I'm also here to ask the King William County Board of Supervisors to keep our library system within the Pum monkey regional library system. The King William County Library is far better now that it's connected to other library systems in the area because it allows us to access hundreds of thousands of books that otherwise we wouldn't have access to or be able to check out, and many other library services as well. And the Pum monkey regional library system follows National Library Association's recommendations as far as what books are appropriate for the age groups that they're aimed at. There's other major benefits of the system as well. As you know, there has been a lot of discussion in the county recently about that. You may know, there's a small group of citizens that are now calling themselves King William for Independent Library. Basically, although they're seeking to separate the library from the Pum monkey regional library system, ultimately, it's that they want to remove books that they don't like, that don't fit their ideological views from the library system. You know, there's been people going to the Pum monkey regional library board and demanding that books be censored, and the library board said that King William citizens should be allowed to decide for themselves what they want to read. Then they wanted to defund the library. The citizens of King William County were angry about that. So now its goal is to separate the library from the Pum monkey regional library system. So I believe that basic American value is freedom to read what you want. The King William County Library takes great pains to make sure every book is appropriate for the age groups, same dad and every parent to decide what books they want to check out for their child. We don't need more restrictive government that decides what we're allowed to read. We don't want, you know, a strict library board that chooses our books for us. We should have access to a large selection of books, many libraries. It gives them the choice to read what they want. That's one of the major benefits of the Pum monkey regional library system. And it means that hopefully we can come together as a community and decide what is appropriate rather than allowing, you know, a small group to decide for the rest of the county. So I hope that you make sure to put the well-being and freedom of our citizens first and making sure that they have access to whatever book they choose and not let people try to control what they are able to check out. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all. If it's such a short one, I'll ask anyone else would like to come forward for our closing. Thank you. The public comment period is closed. In general, on the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman, have we heard the consent agenda?
Sure.
Discussion? Chris?
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
Next item is number nine, unfinished business. King Queen County requests withdrawal from Pum monkey regional library. Mr. Asher.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, ladies and gentlemen. At your April 24th meeting, you heard a request from the county administrator in King and Queen along with the chairman of the board to ask this body, along with the counties of Gootsland and Hanover, to withdraw their membership from the regional library system. They, if you recall, the reasons were many. Most of them were financial, and they need a affirmative vote by not only this board but from the other two. I was asked by the chairman to bring this back tonight for further discussion. And it's where we are.
So I said in the meeting that if they can make it a revenue neutral withdrawal and they want to get out, then that's, that's fine. But if it's not going to be revenue neutral, if us and the other contributing members are going to have to contribute more this year because of the decision, then I'm not going to support it. Have there been any movement there? Have they had any discussions that they've reported?
Mr. Miskowski, the only informal discussion that I had with the county administrator was that they are willing to negotiate with, with the county for that withdrawal. And they don't, they don't agree with the numbers that have been provided by Mr. Shepley. They're kind of in a crossfire that way. But that's, that's what I was told by her, that they would prefer to be able to sit down and negotiate some number that this board might be able to.
But they're not in discussion with us. I mean, they're not the only member.
Right. I understand. I can't, I can't, I have no idea what the discussions are going on in Hanover or Gootsland.
I don't know what direct negotiations with us or any representatives of this body has to do with the larger question of what it does to the finances of the library board.
I understand.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm not in favor of it either. I mean, if they tried to negotiate something so now the taxpaying citizens didn't have a loss, then the other localities would want the same thing. So I don't see their way out of this without. And they, they mentioned in the, when the chair of King Queen Board of Supervisors was here and the administrator, that the lower end of King William County is already using West Point's library. And what will happen here is those that have been using the one in St. Stevens, it's only a few miles to use out. So for, to me, it seems like little or no revenue, they would have full benefit of the Pum monkey regional library, and I don't think it's fair.
Gentlemen, I'm going to make a motion that we deny this request.
I'll say it.
So, I mean, like I said, I've stated where I am on it. I would deny it if it was, if it was revenue. I'd be okay with giving them some time to try to do something. I mean, it's been a month and we haven't really heard anything. They can't get out without an affirmative vote, but at the same time, I'm okay with giving them some more time to try to figure out a way to make it work. But if the, if the offer is, well, we can reduce what you would have to pay in addition, but not eliminate you having to pay something in addition this year, then I would, I would support it.
They're looking, they're looking for a way to stay in the system and not pay. If they have to pay the three, the other localities a equal share, they have not gained anything in that.
And I don't see how they can get around it.
Well, the contract is kind of.
Well, they can get out. That's the thing.
In two years.
So they, they can get out, and they've already started that process. That just gives us time to plan for whatever that, that means. Doing it this year means we've got to go find out how we can fund what becomes of multiple questions there. So, right now, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to vote in the affirmative to let them out unless, unless it's a zero dollar, you know, commitment.
And I don't think you can get there. Not at Zebra.
Mr. Chair, comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Garber's comment. I don't believe if they withdraw from the PRL that they would be eligible to use any of our libraries. They would be out of the system.
Right, but, but it is a two-year process. I asked the question at, at the last meeting when, when they were here about what amount of funding they could contribute and still stay in the system was very vague. You know, we had talked about at one time lowering the Pum monkey regional libraries' AS. It's not a dollar amount that will keep you in, is it?
Members of the board, you know, Ms. Chipman is a, is a member of the, of the board.
Right, and we will have our board meeting on Wednesday. We'll be discussing this. My understanding, if this is correct, because there's been a lot of talk, is that their cards would be disabled, which I really hate to see, a library shutdown and the citizens' needs and services.
But we can't pay for everybody, you know, and that's what I'm getting at.
Right.
And they don't want to, a whole other topic, they don't want to really add any more to the animal shelter. I mean, there's a limit.
I understand.
We don't take on the debt of every county around.
Right, I understand, but that's my.
But I would, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm, I'm old school, but I'd be in favor of disabling their cards if they're not going to pay.
Yeah.
If we didn't pay here, they'd cancel our card.
Yeah, I agree.
It's no different.
Yeah, I agree.
Because is there any kind of a plan, I mean, like, if it's a regional library and people want to come, can individuals pay, like King and Queen citizens, could they pay $35 or something to keep their membership? I mean, I've never asked. I've never heard. Could it be a possibility?
Way back when, a long time ago, when I had an RICO County card, you paid $15 if you were not a RICO County resident. This is a new question for PRL.
Can we bring it up maybe at your meeting? Okay, great. That would be nice because they could, the people could maybe pay their own if their county wouldn't want to. Okay.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm agreeing with Travis that we know that we're going to have to pay more. She was saying there's some way they could do it. No, the Pum monkey, you all told us, their share has to be taken care of. It has to be absolved by all of us, and we're all a portion. Hanover is more. We're a little less, but we're more than King and Queen. So that percentage will be what we have to take of King and Queen, so.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, my question is, how much do they have? Pum monkey regional library has a AS, as they do with us every year.
Correct.
So to stay in the system, how much do they have to contribute? We had talked about the year before last, reducing the AS like 150,000. And it seems to me, when they were here the other night, Mrs., is it Say?
Vivian Say, yeah.
She's an attorney, and I kept asking that question. It seems like there's some wiggle room with the amount of money if, you know, that they could contribute and still be in the system. And I never got that totally answered.
I think part, one thing that they did not mention was the AS for this year was for a library for 52 hours. They have not had a 52-hour library, I'm not even sure how many years back, three or four years. They have not been able to meet the commitment. So if they went with laterally funding this year, they would be less than 30 hours. So I think that that's part of the confusion too. They don't want to have the building close that many hours and pay, but yet they don't want to, they haven't been able to bring it up every year toward the hours. They even got reduced four hours last year.
That's what I guess we were trying to, Mr. Garber was asking. We didn't pay that extra $150,000, but our hours were going to be cut 50%. So like I said, I assume that King and Queen, and you just said it was, they had already been reduced because they haven't been paying their.
Right.
If they continue to not pay this year, they'll be reduced even more. I guess that's what we were trying to figure out. Mr. Garber, I just thought they were still having full benefits with what's the minimum payment?
It's obvious, right. It's obvious they would never have, they wouldn't have anywhere near that.
Yeah.
If it is a dollar amount that they're still being in the system, it sounds like that's what they're looking at doing.
Yeah. Gentlemen, in that, even if they reduced it down to two hours, they could still come to King William County and.
Yes, at West Point.
That's, that's my understanding.
That's what I was getting at. They can even reduce it this year too, but they still want to be, turn their cards off because they are still in there. They just, their library won't be able to.
And they'll, they'll still travel, the ones from St. Stevens to Sharon Road, and the ones from Shacklefoot, Lower, they will be using West Point.
So if we let them out, of course, all the other counties have to let them out too. That way their cards will be cut off. It's unfortunate, like citizens, people in our audience said that they don't want ours to be closed, but we're not King and Queen County. They're not going to pay. Our county people want us to pay. We pay, so they don't pay. Their people need to go to their board.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
I agree.
We talked a little bit about this today. It seems like their intention is to compensate us somewhat, stay in the system however it is that they can, and use our libraries, correct?
I don't, excuse me, I don't know the specifics of, of their offer, but they, that is what was discussed with, with their administrator, and she's not here tonight because they have, they meet the same night that we did.
That's what she said.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So I'm.
Yeah, that's right.
That, if that's the case, I'm totally against it.
Well, that would make more sense because that way they would be helping us. They'd be using our library, so they're reimbursing us some. I mean, I.
It's a regional.
I know.
It's not a King William library.
Yeah, but we can't worry about Hanover or the other counties. If, if they're going to use our library in King William, if they want to work a deal out with us to pay us some more, I think that would benefit King William. But otherwise, like Stuart says, they're going to pay even less and still use it for nothing. Not, not if we cancel.
If you can, if you can do that.
No, we can't do that. We can't do that unless they get out of the system. That's the only way they can cancel their membership, if they get out.
That's not what she's saying.
Yes, that's what she said, yeah. If they drop out, we don't, they don't cancel them until they drop out. Like I said, if they're not, if they just reduce it another 100,000, they'll just cut their hours again like we were going to do last year. They're still members. You can't cut them off because they're still paying some.
Well, they got, they got a piece of it somewhere. Okay. I'm against letting them out.
Is that correct? Yeah, okay. So I would think maybe work something out with them. That way we get a little something, but, I mean, I don't know. I'd not have a favor of letting them out, but if we don't. Can you answer that? Yet they're going to, is a regional going to allow us to negotiate to provide them with library? They don't have any choice. We can negotiate whoever we want. Yeah.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know. It doesn't sound.
I know, it doesn't sound. Or, or your board would be almost useless if we could do that.
Yeah, so our board, they, they're leaning towards just letting them go rather than letting it out.
Oh, even the less than the two years?
So, the other question is, I know you can't answer this. So we let them out, and we know full well that they'll be using West Point Library and upper off of Sharon Road. So what would that do in the negotiations next year for the budget? If we have more, more people physically using the library, I'm sure Pum monkey regionals' AS is going to also go up because they know what's going on here, I would think.
Well, my understanding is that their cards would be.
Yeah, they won't be able to use our libraries, period. I agree, right. I would like to work something out, but that's the best option, it seems. We're not going to, they're not going to pay, and they're still going to use our library. The only way to not do it is to let them out, and then the library board sounds like they're going to let them out early anyway, so that way they'll cut off their cards. Nobody in King and Queen can use any of this.
What, what is the criteria for them to be?
Everybody.
King William County would be a separate entity. So King William County, if, if you don't have a King and Queen residence, it would, the Pum monkey regional library allow those people if they were out of the system with a King and Queen address to use?
She didn't know what it meant if you got.
Yeah.
She's going to ask.
So, so we need, we need to have those answers.
Yeah.
Right, which is why I would say let's just go ahead and withdraw that motion and let's get more.
Right. If you, if you come up with any other questions, if you want to email them to me, I think you have my email address before Wednesday, then, you know, people ask more. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I made the motion, but I, I, I'm somewhat against withdrawing it. I really am. And we keep kicking that can down the road, and sometime we've got to make a decision and get with. I will withdraw it, but I will bring it up again in the work session.
Will we try to invite the county administrator and/or the chairman?
I don't know. I still am not getting the point of how we're going to negotiate with King Queen. It's not our library.
Yeah, I don't. We don't, we didn't get that far. That was just the discussion. I don't know. Even if you did a side agreement, an intra.
I don't think we have the authority to do that.
You, you do have the authority to enter any agreement with, with a neighboring locality. The only thing about it is, is it could undermine the regional system in which you're involved with. That's not fair to the other players in the, in the county to do that.
And we can, there's no thought.
That, that is, that is probably the, the truest statement because you're right. Once those cards are withdrawn.
If you've got new members coming in, I don't.
If you got new members coming in, I don't, a negotiation with King Queen is is not legal.
Yeah, I don't wanna negotiate with them if their cars are withdrawn, we're talking about in the two year period between before they get withdrawn. But now it sounds like the board may be considering not honoring that two year period either. All I wanna do is negotiate if we have to stay in the system for two years and they're not paying as much as we are.
I'm sorry, Mr. Green, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's alright, that's alright.
Their board cannot vote on that co- on that subject.
They can't.
The governing bodies have to, now the board may.
That's what I said, the library board can, they can do whatever they want, she said they were thinking about kicking them out, so if they're the library board, so. If they kick them out.
Okay. Right, now as far as budgetary authority, you have budgetary authority over them, obviously, and that could, that could impose some restrictions to them. If they're not paying, or if any, any member jurisdiction is not paying, then that could cause.
Well, that's what they're doing now, that's what happened to us, like I said, we didn't pay a hundred and fifty and our hours were cut fifty percent, like I said, Travis said, the math didn't work out right. It still doesn't work right, but King and Queen will be cut because they are cutting their budget, because they said they were, so they will be cutting more hours, she said they're only thirty two hours now. They go down to twenty or go down to fifteen, they'll still be in the system, like I said, I think we should wait too, but, but did you withdraw?
I I withdrew it, but I I I hesitantly.
I wanna wait and see what the board says, and if Hanover and if. Cause like I said, the only way not to do is have them kicked out and not be able to use their cards, I mean, hate to do that for anybody with library service, but.
Responsibility to pay.
Yeah, just like it is with the with the veterinary place, and they don't do that either, so.
We'll have a back with you on the June, uh, June twelfth again.
Yeah.
Alright, and next item is number ten, FY twenty two annual physical audit, Aaron Hawkins. Is that by Zoom? Oh, I didn't see the books.
Thank you for having me this evening, as I know you're opening what I've just handed out to you. And like I said, there's there's a PDF of the final report out there as well, floating around. Obviously, you you'd like to see me standing here in in December, um, and and it's May, but. There is improvement over the prior years, I don't think I was standing here until the following September or October, um, so. I do believe progress is being made in terms of getting more timely, and um, I think the anticipation and the and the um, expectation is that. We're gonna be back on track for for FY twenty three and and finishing things up and, um, you know. Getting the report done and and presented in December, but we're we're still here to talk about twenty two, and. Um, everyone has a copy of the financial report, um, just to talk a little bit about the process of the audit, you know, I think we. Over the summer last year, we tried to do some internal controls testing, think that we could do um, compliance work. Uh, things that you can do before you have a final set of books, and so we did that over the summer. The bank reconciliation was kind of the, and and kind of the theme from ongoing from FY twenty one, we were kind of waiting on that to be completed. As of June thirty, twenty twenty two, before we could start our audit work, and so um, field work took place in January. And um, you know, we got through a lot of things, and then we still had a little bit of obstacles to to overcome. In in the weeks and 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 few months that followed the field work, but we did it to a good point where we were able to get through everything and and get the report finalized. And that's what brings me here today, you know, I owe a lot of thanks to finance staff for for working with us, um, you know. Getting us to this point, so. On page one is where I always start when I, when I, when I go through these financial statements, and that's where you see our report. And opinion on the audit, and our opinion is unmodified, uh, which means that. In our opinion, these financial statements can be relied upon as being materially correct, um, you know, as we'll talk about a little bit later, there were some adjustments that had to be made. By the auditors, but we got to a point where where these numbers are are we materially correct based on the testing that we've done. So on five A is where, and it's five A through, I'm not sure how many letters go, but I like to point out that this is the management. Uh, discussion and analysis section of the report, and I think it's an important place to look and read, and this is prepared by the county finance department. Um, every bit of this, and it provides a lot of information that, you know. Really talks about how you arrived at the financial condition you did at the end of the year, uh, why revenues were what they were expenditures, um, you know. Demographic type impacts, things that um, contributed towards towards the fiscal year that was that was audited. And there's a lot of things that you can put in here in terms of comparing current year to prior year, uh, things like that aren't really appropriate to be shown. In the financial statements themselves, and there's kind of a a a dictated way that the financial statements are supposed to be prepared, and we don't. You know, we can't just show current and prior year information, or it would be, um, it would look weird and incorrect, so that's why the management's discussion and analysis section. It's a good place to do that, so you can look at what numbers were this year versus last year. Let's jump ahead to page eight, and this is where your fund financial statements begin, and it's exhibit three. Exhibits one and two are are what's called your entity wide financial statements, those take into account a lot of things like capital assets, long term debt. Uh, it gets away from what true fund balances, so this is why I kind of pone in on exhibit three, these are your your governmental funds and your fund balances. And you'll see general fund is the first column, and your fund balance at the end of the year was fourteen point one million dollars. Of which nine point six of that is unassigned, which is um, free to use at at the county's discretion. It's not marked as being non-spendable, restricted, or committed for any purposes. On page ten is exhibit five, this shows your changes in your fund balances for the year. And general fund increased from about ten point eight million dollars up to about fourteen point one million. Skip kind of far ahead to this point to to page one twenty three. And I I think schedules one and two are just an important thing to to point out when I, when I present these to the board. As it's, it it shows you what your your actual performance was versus your budget. Um, I think it's just a useful tool to be able to get down into a detailed um, format as to how we, how you performed actual versus final budget. Uh, for schedule one is your revenues, and schedule two is your expenditures. Another page I like to 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 go over with with the board is page one fifty three. And this shows what your tax collection rates are, and the bottom row is twenty twenty two. In which tax taxes collected were were back up to a percentage of for the current ninety two point three four percent. And for all, all tax years up to ninety seven point nine three percent. Something further along, this is page one sixty two. And this is the report that we have to issue, being that the county falls under government auditing standards. This talks about the the testing of internal controls that we have to perform as well as compliance testing. And, and it's also where we can identify if there's any findings related to those, and we we do have three findings to talk about. And um, a couple of those, and and maybe even all three are similar to to the ones from last year, but I'll I'll be in a little more detailed. In my description on those in a moment, once I'm actually looking at them. On page one sixty four is our report and opinion on federal compliance work that we have to do. Being that the county receives over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal assistance, you know, you're required to have a single audit. And we performed through federal compliance testing, I'm sure, I believe ARPA and uh, ESER. Funding at the school board were tested as major programs, and we also tested the school food, child nutrition cluster as well. As a major program, and we had no federal findings to report on the federal compliance work that we did. On page one seventy one i- is where we are gonna talk about the findings that we have. And so the first one has to do with with journal entries, adjusting entries that were prepared um, during the course of the audit field work. Um, we've kind of identified what what categories those were, and kind of which department um, was overseeing those, those particular items. Um, you know, I think we've, we've had some pretty good discussions with folks at finance at the county and the school board, and um. I personally feel really good about the um, expectation and 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 what we anticipate. Uh, for those types of journal entries to not be present in FY twenty three when the audit takes place, and. Um, I know I'm I'm more than willing to to make myself available to, um, you know, answer any questions, help out with trying to avoid those. Um, in the future, so I know this is um, something that's very important to the finance department is 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 not having a similar finding like this in FY twenty three. Uh, the second one, which is finding twenty twenty two dash zero zero two, this is on page one seventy two. And we had a similar finding last year, but it's a little bit different this year in that, um. You you know, the the county was uh, forced with a situation that, you know, you were behind on bank reconciliations, and they weren't being performed. Because the treasurer's office had so much turnover, that they didn't have the staff in place to be able to perform that function. And it was really a necessity that the finance department step up and do that, or else it wasn't gonna get done. Um, a- and and so, but the issue is, is that the finance department is also the department that's recording transactions, they can post journal entries. And so that can really create like a segregation of duties issue, if they're able to post journal entries and also reconcile the bank account. You know, it it presents, um, you know, that kind of weakness in internal control that, you know. Uh, I'm preparing a bank reconciliation, it's not working out, or I can make a journal entry to make it work out, and so now I'm not saying that that's what's happening, but that's the potential. And and that, and so, um, but I still don't know that the treasurer's office has that ability currently to be able to perform bank reconciliation. So, you know, rather than them not being done, I do think it's important that the finance department um, continue to do those until that. Situation presents itself, and I think we, from talking to the finance department, we kind of agreed that, um, in the time being, the finance department can you doing it, but that. Both departments, the finance and treasurer's office would review these bank reconciliations, and personnel from both departments to make sure that. Um, they both agree that these reconciliations are correct. And then on page one seventy three, it is the third finding that we have, and um, you know, just the fact that the bank reconciliation were so far behind. Just in and of itself, um, presented itself as a finding, just because it, you know, whenever you get behind on bank reconciliations, it is, it just inherently presents. Uh, you know, a weakness in internal control, and um, you know, again, that, you know, with so much turnover at the treasurer's office, they just. They didn't have anyone that was able to do it, and then um, it became kind of thrust upon the finance department to step up and do it, but. Um, I do believe from what I've heard is that the bank reconciliations are becoming more up to date in FY twenty three. Uh, I'm not sure how how far along we are, but um, really you wanna get to a point where. Um, what are we, in May right now, um, before the end of May, you want April reconciled. Um, that's just, you know, I think that's, in my opinion, a good rule of thumb for an internal control and bank reconciliations is that. You know, you have the previous month reconciled before the end of the subsequent month, you know, I think anytime something piles up, it's. Anytime you dig yourself into a hole, it's hard to dig yourself out further along you go, and so I I don't think you ever wanna get beyond one month. Uh, but again, I I do feel confident that progress is being made um, on all three of those areas. And those are the only items I had to go over in the report, I thought those were the most relevant and important things to talk about. Uh, I did issue a separate management letter, which um, I gave to the board chair, it's separate from the audit, but just. Includes things that we've identified as, hey, things that you need to be aware of, uh, one of which was, you all have county funds that. Probably ought to be reported as utility funds, like business type activities for utility um, activity that you have, and. Um, we've talked about it in the previous years, but you know, we were so far behind this year in getting this done, that I think the more important thing was just. To get these financial statements, um, you know, completed, and the anticipation is that for FY twenty three. Um, we can separate these out and present them separately, it's really just a matter of putting them in a different section in the report. Um, where they should probably be displayed rather than within the general governmental activities. The other item on the management letter was still talking about cash, I think there is like a seventy some thousand dollar amount of. Uh, most of which is identifiable, but just reconciling items on the bank reconciliation, where you're still trying to alleviate, you know. Obviously, when you do a bank reconciliation, you wanna get to zero, you wanna have, this is what cash is, these are deposits in transit that we've made, but haven't cleared the bank. These are outstanding checks that gone out the door and haven't cleared the bank, and this is the net. This is the total per RGL, and it's a difference of zero, that's where you wanna be, um, so, but as of June twenty two, there was still. Um, I think seventy some thousand that was still identified as reconciling items, which is below materiality. Um, but when you're talking about cash, you really wanna get to a point where it's where it's zero.
Are there many jurisdictions that are in a stimulus book with that, just seventy thousand?
No, no, not at all, I mean, I, you know. Yes, yeah, and that's where, that's where you, yeah, that's where, when it comes to cash, that's where you should be, now I have some localities that may have. You know, usually it's like some smaller towns, they don't have as maybe strong of a finance department, or they only have a department, they just had. A treasurer or a clerk who does a lot of things, and so, yeah, there may be like a thousand or two thousand dollars that they're struggling with, but. But no, I would say for the other counties that I, that I'm partner in charge for, and I think I'm, I probably do like a seven or eight or so, I don't have any that. You know, have the cash out of balance like that. Anyone?
Actually, here's on your, I guess, third finding, you said the recommendation was to put. Procedures in place to ensure that reconciliations are prepared in a timely manner, if they haven't, if they're already back not done, how can you? Catch up and. Do them in a timely manner if they're so far behind.
Well, that's what you gotta do, you have to catch up and then start, start doing them timely, I guess the first, the first, I guess if you were gonna reword it, you could say first thing, catch up. Then start doing them timely, um.
You don't have any, I mean, you just say to do that, but you don't have a specific procedure that you could use, that's just an idea.
Okay, um, yeah, I did, I did not get into a a specific, um, you know, detailed. Plans in place, but I'm definitely happy to provide those separately for sure, um. But I mean, it's been an on, that's been kind of an ongoing thing, but I'm also encouraged by the progress that they've been being made, I I, from what I've been told, if the, you know, the finance department has made. Considerable progress on catching up, I think they're, I don't know what month they're on, but um, you know, I I know we had a treasurer turnover that we started the process on that. Which was for as of September twenty two, and I know they got through that, so, um, cause they sent me some reconciliations that they had done, and I imagine they're, they're past that point, but.
I guess that's where I'm confused, cause when we were told that the of the turnover of the treasurer's office, everything's supposed to balance out to zero, and you start from scratch. And it's supposed to be finished from the previous treasurer, and then everything starts fresh, but if, how can it start fresh if it's not done before?
Well, the problem with the bank reconciliation is, it's hard to do it as of a certain date, so like, I I forget what date it was, so say it was September twelfth, I think, or something like that. With the data, old treasures going out, new treasures coming in, there are certain things you can verify as of that date, you can count cash on hand, you can count. Dog tags, um, manual receipt books, um, check stock, things like that, um. And sometimes you can even do some work on property taxes and and verifying the amounts that were delinquent, but. Um, usually it takes a little bit of time to reconcile a bank account, even if you're up to date, like, so that's even, that's to say, for the sake of argument that. Um, Sept- September twelfth rolled around, and shoot, we had July reconciled, uh, we had August reconciled. Um, but the reconcile as of September twelfth is gonna take some time, it'd be hard to do it on that specific day. Um, so that's usually why that procedure isn't done on the day of the treasurer's turnover, it gets done when it's been completed. Now, in this case, you weren't done with. you weren't done with July and August and you're still catching up to that point. Um but and I don't know if I'm answering the question successfully or not, but.
We're just trying to, you know, get better and so we can catch up and move forward, so.
Right.
And do you work with the treasurer's office as well? You keep saying finance, but doesn't the treasurer's office have something to do with it as well?
So it previously they did, um but then, you know, amongst the turnover that happened in that office, necessity became apparent that on the county side, that task had to be moved to finance for it to be done, or else I wouldn't probably be standing here. I, in fact, I know I wouldn't be standing here. Um so that's why my communications on the bank reconciliation for some time now, at least for FY twenty-two audit, has been pretty much strictly with the finance department. I think in FY twenty-one, it was even through finance department and the consultant that the county um, you know, hired to help them as well. So um again, I, I still believe that my, my, my belief is that for, for a ideal situation, the treasurer's office has someone in place that's performing those bank reconciliations. I, that's, that's what I see at at every county that I go to and 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 city. And so, but like I said, when you have a situation like this and the necessity becomes that it still needs to get done, then by all means, I think it was the right decision to get the finance department to do it. But like again, I kind of, kind of just running around in circles and saying the same thing over and over. I, I, I do think that ultimately it would be a good thing for it to be back in the treasurer's office, but they need to have someone in place that can do it and that can involve training. You know, in most situations, um you know, a treasurer's been there a while, he has someone that's like maybe like a chief deputy treasurer and they reconcile the bank reconciliation from, or reconcile the bank accounts every month and um maybe they even train someone, another deputy, so when that person leaves, it transitions to that person. And so you always have kind of a plan in place and a backup for um who's going to take that on when someone leaves and um when that falls away, um there's no one left to do it. And so um so I, so where do you go from here? If you want to get it back into the treasurer's office, um training would have to take place. Someone who knows how to reconcile bank accounts would have to train someone within that department to be able to do it.
Mr. Moore, do you have any question?
Uh, no, I'm looking forward to reading the report. And Ms. uh Ms. Branch, if you could, uh if you could grab a copy for me, Ms. Branch, I'll have my wife pick it up in the morning.
And there, there is a final PDF document out there as well.
I, I didn't see.
I, I don't know. When you said PDF, I don't know where you're stopping.
Right up here.
I know you're saying that, that we I, yeah, I didn't think we had.
Okay, there you go.
It's not out there for us.
Okay. Perfect. So it will be, it will be available. Any other questions?
Now, thanks to your firm and finance for getting this done. So we can.
And anyone else that helped?
Well, thank you for having me. Again, I, my, 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 my plan is to be seeing you all in, in, in December for twenty twenty-three and I'm, and I'm available to help out, um provide assistance however I can. Thank you.
Thanks. And the way I am seeing be worded, I think Ms. Natasha Brown has a motion. That way it's worded.
Yeah, we have a motion before you um for the board to approve what was just presented. The twenty twenty-two annual financial report. And we do understand if you wanted to push this off until the next meeting, we'll, we'll just move that because you did this recently, but.
They have a motion on it.
This is twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, this is the wrong day.
It should be twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, yeah.
I'd like to look at it a little bit more.
Sure, yeah.
All right, and back to the regular meeting, I think. We can be up.
Do, can we do it at the work session? I mean, I'm only one person here.
I'm the same.
I'm good with the work session.
I'm looking, I'm good with that. Mr. Moore, you good with that?
Yes, sir. I was going to ask if there's going to be any impediments to the finance department by delaying anymore.
I didn't understand.
Any impediments for delaying it with finance department? I was, is there Natasha, would there be any delays? There's no time limit, is there?
Oh, for you to, to um approve it?
Right.
No, we've already submitted to the APA um federal uh audit clearinghouse, all that happened. It's not. It's just now for you to approve it.
Good with the work session then?
All right, and next item, C, resolution twenty-three dash thirty-nine King William County Public Schools Budget Amendment, Stacy Long.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Um, resolution twenty-three thirty-nine is for additional funding in which we received this year. Um insurance claims, we had a um septic backup in one of our buildings and ha- received insurance claims in which we were hoping not to have an issue like that, but that's um additional revenue. offset the expenditure. We also were awarded a grant for fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and three dollars. That was a security grant for Hamilton Homes Middle School. We used that, we used um that grant to um put film on windows to help with security. We bought cameras for inside of the building and exterior um places and also more badge in, badge out to secure the front office. Um the third one before you is a school reserve fund request and that is um um we have um had multiple issues with buses that we expected to be on the road long after um the current time. Um we have four buses that have been worked on currently. Um one of them is um beyond repair. Um there's one that's, we're looking at a fifty-three thousand dollar um replacement for the engine. So we are requesting that we go ahead and just purchase two new buses and surplus those two of the older buses that we're having issues with using that state contract. Um because we were expecting these buses to be online for three to five more years and I don't want to put fifty thousand dollars into a bus that already fourteen years old or twelve before, no, hold on. Twelve years old. And then um before you, at the end is using our VPSA bond funding, we would like our original budget came in for um our track and the original request was one point two million. We thought um we camered the lines underneath and found that only one large collapsed line had occurred. So this um four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what we're requesting out of our bond fund. That would um work to repair the damage underground piping that has failed and are settled. Install a new French drain system along the interior of the track to keep that from happening again. Reset all drain endlets around the track, remove the rubber surface, mill the asphalt, repave the track, recote the rubber surface and stripe. Um this is something that has to be done every so many years, so it just became the timing we've, we've um fixed and repaired as long as we could to get through the championship. But um this is um part of that bond funding that Dan, um Davenport brought to you back in February or March of last year requesting. And we are using a trust field cooperative contract on that for the pricing. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may. How did we ever arrive at the one point two million dollars for the, for the track initially?
Um that was our proposal that was given to us prior to the um damage underneath the track. And looking at other districts around us, their tracks were anywhere from four hundred to one point five million. So it was a decent estimate at the time. Um and so we went with the estimate because if we didn't, if we estimated low and it came in high, we wouldn't have been able to do it. But we personally, out of operations funds, paid the fifteen thousand dollars to have the track um scoped and found that there was only one large one. Now, once we dig up the track and fix that one area, if there is something else, I will be coming back to you on that. But um at the time, that was the estimate we were provided. Um we were able to find a cooperative contract that saved us some money. You know, when one school district goes out and procures something, your prices are all over the place.
So, so the estimate that we got initially, was that from the contractor that is uh going to be doing the, the work on the strike?
So we got multiple estimates and they were all between one million and one point five. And it was kind of the unknown more than anything. They weren't sure what the level of damage was based on the cracking that they saw from the surface.
I'm good. I'm going to approve all the revenues. I'm sorry. Mr. Moore, do you have any comment?
Uh, did I miss something? Are we talking about, have we talked about the rehab for the um septic facility?
That's the next one, sir.
That's, that's next. I'm sorry. Okay. Um Mr. Chairman, no, no other comments?
Steven?
No.
Did I hear you? Make motion on it?
Which one?
I'll say it.
Okay.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moorean?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Chairman Hodge.
Hi.
You got one more?
Yes. So um the next thing, and thank you to Mr. Ashcraft for fitting this in. Um we've been working with um Bowman, with the county um on determining whether we could refurbish our wastewater treatment plant or if we were going to have to completely redo. Um with the VPSA bond funding only being a two-year period, we are going to be running out of time by May of twenty twenty-four. So we have worked closely um with Bowman and um Mr. Hudgens has been involved, I believe, in the process with that. Um and they are, believe that we can do a refurbish for the price of six hundred and one thousand nine fifty-three. That was above what we originally budgeted of five hundred to five fifty, but we do have some of the savings from the track project to oversee this. Um if we do not start this project on a June first date, it could delay opening of schools because we are going to be pumping out on a day to every other day basis over the summer to be able to ha- hold summer school and to ho- hold the summer sneakers program, but it would be too much if we were open full, full school year and have to pump out um at a, and the cost would be rather expensive. So if we can start on June first, it's an eight-week um timeline, and so we can have it done before we're hoping to have it done before school starts back again in August. So thank you for the last minute. Um we were going back and forth with them. To redo the whole project, we were getting prices well over a million dollars. This will add fifteen to twenty years, I think, is what I was told. Fifteen years, at least fifteen years to the project. Okay.
What's your start date for school?
Um August twenty-first. For students.
Right.
But I'm with the eight-week timeline, starting June first, we will be um we're hoping that that process will be done before teachers even come back on August fourth, I believe.
Be close. Anybody have anything?
So what would this leave the balance of the uh?
Fun. The bond, the bond.
Sure. Um so providing an update to Mr. Ashcraft. Um so adding the um HVAC project at six fifty, which we've submitted about twenty thousand of that already. On top of all the stuff we already discussed and the stuff that's already occurred, we have procured five point two and our original award was six point six. And that project included issuance of the bonds, the AES HVAC system that took place um last summer. The treatment plant that we're talking about tonight, the track and field we already talked about tonight, the cool spring roof and the HVAC system that will, has already started, but will take place um this summer. Completion will be this summer, the Hamilton, the King William High School HVAC units that will take place this summer. And then we have additional projects. So those are all the projects for the bit original bond funding and working with the SNAP and the bond group. Um there's additional projects that we have come up with that we would like to talk um with Mr. Ashcraft and you all in the future to use that funding. They were on the big Davenport sk- schedule, but because we have the savings, we wanted to try to see if we could move forward with those. But I'm not ready to talk about that tonight. I don't have those estimates in yet. And Mr. Ashcraft could send this schedule, you could send the schedule to them, couldn't you?
Yes, I believe they that has been sent already. Yeah. Or at least something that you sent to me similar.
Okay, yeah.
Thank, thank you for sharing that tonight.
Anything else?
I, I just have one, one question of um procedurally, is the request for a appropriation of the amount for the contract? Or is that money already appropriated and the school board is requesting just approval of the expenditure?
Um the county pays these bills. We, we aren't, the, the bond is with the county. And so I was under the impression I came to get approval for the projects and I work with Natasha to have the county pay the funding.
Okay, so the procure, the procurement of this contract is set through the finance department?
Through the county.
Through the county. That's already been done and this is a request to approve the contract in this amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's
I'm going to approve that. I'll say it.
Oh, just a second. Mi- Mr. Ashcraft. When, didn't we have a resolution where we approved the uh HVAC systems, which you use some of this funding? So we don't need a resolution? Is, is that what we're saying?
That, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah.
From the, what was in the agenda materials, whether there was an appropriation already completed for the six hundred thousand dollars or if this was a, a word of the contract and.
So I thought the whole amount was appropriated at the beginning, but we came and asked for approval for this individual project. So my.
You left it. Called the finance, not how it uh worked out originally, um you know, with the bond now.
So he's asking if I need a resolution for this um six hundred thousand. It was under the original, I thought, bond appropriation that, but we were told we had to bring each project before the board of supervisors, before we could move forward with each project.
Um the board approved the six point six to be put into an escrow from, from our four, us to draw some for these projects and then we monitor that because it's on the county's book, it's not on the school's book. And we've already taken care of that one. The board approved the escrow.
Okay, and so thi- this has been a, a county procured contract for six hundred and one thousand dollars to be pulled out of an already appropriated six point six million dollar fund.
Right.
Okay.
So we don't need to review?
It would be a, you know, resolutions are great because they put it down on paper, but um it would be a
The, the procurement for this particular project is that Bowman has been procured as the county's on-call engineering service. And they have made a proposal to design-build this with their own subcontractors for this price.
Okay, we might want to pause and talk about the procurement aspect for that amount, because usually the, uh in a policy, there's a certain amount through an annual contract that can be awarded.
When I checked with Julie, there was no amount in the contract. There was no limit in the, no cap.
Maybe just table it for.
I was drawing a motion and you guys can work that up.
So I will have the project stopped for the June first date?
Uh no, I was saying just table it for now at this meeting. Let me look it up for a second, see if I can get my head around it.
We're weekly.
So I think Max is saying he's going to research it while we finish the meeting.
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you were putting it off to the work session. Okay, I'm good with that. All right, and while you're trying to research your up.
Um, yeah, if, if someone could make a motion to table that till the end of the agenda.
Motion, say, say. Chris?
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Chairman Haji?
Hi.
You get the special events discussion.
The graph language that's included in the agenda, um, was prepared at the request of administration and their conversations with the Commissioner of the Revenue. As a means of creating an exemption from certain license taxation for special events that are, um, county-related. I will leave the, the policy discussion to, to Steve and, uh, others, but that was the intent of the, the requested language. Sorry?
No. We're working on the, the other, the other. Yeah, right, everybody's working on the one thing, we've got the special event ordinance discussion that we have up right now. That, uh, Max has punted over to your table, so he can finish his work.
I, sorry, sorry, I, I just introduced the item as um, a policy that had been initiated out of administration and the Commissioner of the Revenue's office to address an exemption from certain license taxation for county-related events.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, we started out with this being pretty complicated, and I think we were able to simplify it to what I think everybody understands, is that we are trying to hold special events in the county and not have the vendors, uh, who they're, uh, penalized, uh, by having to pay a fee. Um, many of the vendors who come to these things already have business licenses, and of course, the, the farming community is exempt. Uh, this, uh, ordinance is, I understand it, written by the county attorney, would allow an exemption for anything that would be on county property. Uh, or, um, well, it's on, on, or, or county operated event. Um, we may have to come back to you at a later time to address some other uh, specific things related to possibly mill stacks or peddler's license or things like that, but for this particular, uh, ordinance, this will get us under the window in which the farmer's market and the Juneteenth celebration and anything else that might happen here in the short term will be able to use. And then we can come back later and, and continue to work with the Commissioner or the Revenue to address, uh, those other two, uh, items I just mentioned.
And what you're asking for, I think, is eighteen dash thirty-seven item R? And eighteen dash one ten?
Yes.
The highlighted areas to
That's correct.
Add it to.
That's correct, and all we're asking tonight is for the authority to advertise for a public hearing because this is an ordinance change and it would be held on, uh, June the twelfth.
You've got any clues?
I know, we are, actually, the farmer's market would already have started and, um, it's within the purview of, uh, of the administration to, to creates, uh, an or, uh, an emergency situation, which would allow them to go ahead and move forward with their first, uh, event. And then they would, they would be under the provisions of the ordinance after that.
So you need a motion for the public hearing?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for a public hearing. Was it eighteen, what was it?
Eighteen dash thirty-seven.
Eighteen days thirty-seven.
One ten, the highlighted areas, which are R and the entire eighteen days one ten.
What he said.
Is what they
That's it. I'll second Mr. Garber's motion.
All right, and brother? Chris?
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Chairman Haji?
Hi. All right, thank you. Now, according to the financial report, did you have any presentation on that? Okay.
A resolution was proposed before the board for appropriation of the arm, so the extract back in, I think, May or June last year.
So it was, it was a resolution, I thought?
The school board, um, uh, approved a, a resolution February seventeenth, I think, last year. And then, uh, then it came to you to appropriate the fund. So tonight I wanted, I wanted to update the board on the bank reconciliations along with present the third quarter financial report. And I guess what I'll do first off is, do you guys have any questions in regards to the audit? I mean, and everything that was presented so far, so if I'm up here, question?
Just got it. Happy it's done.
Okay.
Um, we'll dive in a bit more, I don't have any, uh, direct questions right now, you know, a lot of the things that we discussed with Aaron and I were things that we've been talking about.
Right, right, one of the things that he brought up at, at the very end is the seventy thousand. And what I wanted to do is let you guys know that that is something that is, we've been working with the current treasurer, and she has been so helpful with us finding, um, issues where maybe the payment came in and last year, and we're getting that posted to the, the system's record now, or we're actually posting it to June, so that that person doesn't have to do a penalty and interest and all that, but Abby Carlton has been working with us and, and will resolving things as we go. And, um, just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
So you're telling me we're, we're gonna be down to zero?
You should be down to zero, yeah. Yes, that is the goal. So, prior to July first, twenty twenty-two, the task of reconciliation of bank accounts was under the treasurer's office. I present the last bank reconciliation from the former treasurer, Mr. Witt, was back in September twenty September twenty twenty. So this is the reconciliation that was provided to the auditors. As you can see, it's, it's um, maybe some people might look at it and say, what is that? But it did pass the audit, and Mr. Witt completely understood what all that was and could explain it. So, just wanted to kind of present that. Um, this bank reconciliation was part of the turnover audit performed by an outside audit from firm upon Mr. Witt's resignation. Since September twenty twenty, bank reconciliations had not been provided to the outside auditing firm. This made the county annual financial audit process incomplete at year-end twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. For the Code of Virginia, fifteen point two, twenty-five-ten, the deadline is December fifteenth for preceding fiscal year. Action was needed to complete the task of moving forward to complete the annual financial statements. For this reason, the board moved this task to county finance for both county and school bank account as of July first, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. County finance and school finance began with this current fiscal year, working in three different fiscal years. Excel has been used to complete reconciliations, as you can see, Mr. Witt actually used green sheets for his reconciliation. Either of these methods is acceptable, per our auditing firm, quite a few clients use spreadsheets. One thing I believe other departments working with county finance would say is that our team does not look for excuses but solutions. County finance is now using the financial software Edmunds for bank reconciliation for twenty FY twenty twenty-three. Before this could take place, all the items in the system prior to July one, twenty twenty-two had to be identified in our bank account. This meant King William County had to go back until the last completed reconciliation in September twenty twenty and verify data. Are there any questions, um, regarding the bank reconciliations, where we're at with it?
Well, you know, where are you with it?
Well, we are finishing up April right now, Gina started working on May, uh, actually Friday. So, yeah. Where, where Mr. Hawkins wants us to be. All right. So included in the agenda pack, that packet this evening is an overview financial report for FY twenty-three, third quarter. So revenues and expenditure summaries are included in page one through five. Page six of the packet includes a summary of noteworthy items. Real estate revenues as of March thirty-first are at forty-nine point nine percent, which is a good indication that we will meet budget projections. First half of twenty twenty-three calendar year tax payment will be due June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Personal property revenues are at ninety-three point two percent with due dates in January. Vehicle tax revenue at eighty-one percent collection. Both personal property tax and vehicle tax revenues continue to be collected. The treasurer just recently placed DMV holds on unpaid tax bills to encourage payment of tax bills. Um, I spoke with Ms. Carlton today too, and she has, um, she is working with Tax Authority to also assist us with anything from twenty eighteen to, um, she's working on twenty twenty-two, but if someone had, if someone has not paid a tax bill for a personal property from twenty eighteen that consistently has not paid all the way through twenty twenty-two, Tax Authority would then take that one. But she, her office is actually working with anything twenty twenty-two for collection. Um, actually, in Edmunds, I ran a report today, just to give you an idea of, you know, the collections so far and what is still outstanding that has been billed for twenty twenty-two. And eighty, eight hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred sixteen remained unpaid for twenty twenty-two vehicle tax and two hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred eleven unpaid for twenty twenty-two personal property. So with those new numbers, that, you know, when, if you were, if we were to collect all of that, the projections, we would be within our projections that we had anticipated. Overall, the actual expenditures are consistent with budget estimates in similar comparison to prior years. Are there any questions about revenues and expenditure? Capital projects are on page seven, capital projects completed during first quarter included cybersecurity initiatives, emergency backup batteries at the courthouse, a vehicle for utilities department. Capital projects completed second quarter, funding to the West Point Volunteer Fire and Rescue, SC, FCBA for our fire and EMS, which we did receive a grant reimbursement from AFG in January twenty, to, on, in January. The welcome signage, Sheriff's Office Interceptor, Administration Parking Lot Repairs. And then during third quarter, for the capital projects, society completion at three sixty complex, HVAC repair in the clerk's office, vehicle purchase for animal control. And in progress, encumbered for HVAC, it's fifty-nine thousand for the courthouse, deed root, deed book room and three sixty complex that we anticipate completing before the end of this fiscal year. Uh, the access, access security with a hundred and five thousand five sixteen encumbered. And the, this is a convenience site with four hundred thirty thousand eight ninety encumbered. Page eight includes the proffer's summary. The proffer's fund has a balance of seventy-eight, uh, seven hundred eighty-four thousand seven thirty-nine as of March thirty-first. And FY twenty-three, two hundred forty-nine thousand one sixty-four was committed from proffers to support capital projects for two, two hundred thousand and forty-nine thousand one sixty-four to support debt service lease payment on FY twenty-two purchase of sheriff's office vehicles. Proffer's cash is collected from developers to go towards public facilities and infrastructure needs to serve the new development. Utility summary is outlined on page nine. The water and sewer fund makeup utilities fund. As, um, the auditor spoke about earlier, we are working with them currently on breaking that away from our general fund so that it will be, um, presented in the annual financial statement as a enterprise fund. That is not only based on what the auditors had asked us to do, but also in compliance with the new bond we're working on with the water tower. That is one of the conditions, so that will be completed for FY twenty-three. The water fund balance has, the fund balance has nine hundred seventy-nine thousand nine eighty-nine as of March thirty-first. Water revenues consist of water usage, water connections and meter sales. The sewer fund has a balance of two million forty-two thousand one ninety-four as of March thirty-first. Sewer revenues consist of sewer connection fees. The ARPA summary is on, located on page ten. ARPA funds have been appropriated for three million three hundred thirty thousand seven hundred ninety-eight. We received those funds, um, dash back in twenty twenty-two, I believe, was that, we got that second half of it? The county has expended a total of eight hundred fifty-eight thousand forty, four hundred ninety-nine from March third, twenty twenty-one through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and we have submitted our annual report. The social service fund has expended fifty-six percent of the overall FY twenty-three budget through third quarter. Um, just wanted to kind of let everyone, the board know that the local share that remains um, for, if they were April, May and June, is a hundred fifty thousand ninety-three eighty, that has not been um, i- i- it is included in the appropriation that the board has for FY twenty-three, but we have not had to move that over there yet. But keep in mind, usually, this is where they start working into the pass-through at the higher rate on the county, so. But I do feel like, just speaking with Amanda, we're, we're going to be all right this year without having to ask for an additional local share. The regional animal shelter fund revenues and expenses also are consistent in comparison to prior years for third quarter. Their revenues are eighty percent and expenses seventy-five percent. King William County frontloads the general fund transfer in July each year to the animal shelter fund. King and Queen are billed by finance each month by half, before half of the monthly expenses, plus we added a three percent administration fee to that. And then last is Parks and Recreation Programs. Fund is on target with anticipated program revenues and expenditures, she continues to add programs. Parks and Recreation Program revenues and expenditures are separate from the general fund. General administrative costs for the Parks and Rec Department are covered by the general fund. Are there any questions?
I don't have any, Mr. Chair. Mr. Moore?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, he should have it, that report.
And I have sent him the document.
Oh, man.
And just for your knowledge, when this is uploaded to our county website, behind, included with this will be the PDFs from Edmunds. It will actually give the backup for all the, as we've talked about before, these are summarized line items, so you guys don't have to look at fifty pages, but that will be included with that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft, did you have anything to present or just which you already did in the package?
Yeah, what's in the, uh, the board package, Mr. Chairman, is my report. And obviously you have the other, uh, department reports, uh, along with it. Um, if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer, but, uh, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I try to keep you updated weekly on, uh, the progress of all these. We resolved our table issue.
I believe so, but possibly not in the way that
So would you do resolution?
Um, it, it might be better for us to go, because we're actually talking about it.
We thought we didn't have one, didn't we?
All right, somebody give me twenty-seven, eleven, eight, whatever.
You wanna do? Y'all wanna do the, uh, board comments before we go into court? We just stay one way.
That's fine, Mr. Chair, I'm just, I'm getting, I'm trying to get this, uh, fifth section pulled up.
Oh, excuse me, I think we should do this.
Okay, Mr. Moore and I think we're up.
Okay, Mister Moore and I think we're up, board comments.
Uh, no, sorry, I couldn't make it this evening. I've got a good excuse. Um, I guess for Mister Hudgens, the transfer site due date is coming up shortly. I see some pavement up there.
They are wrapping up soon. It has been paved, uh, they are going to be, I think, installing fencing next week or so. And size a little cleanup and some E and S, that would be it for the contractors. Uh, this separately contracted guard rail uh, to be put in at the same time.
We're gonna have anything ceremonials speaking?
Not sure, we got a red, uh, red ribbon.
You might get run over in that part.
Okay, no other comments, Mister Chairman?
Keep finishing.
Yes.
Okay. Stuart.
Uh, wanna wish everybody a happy Memorial Day, uh, coming up, be safe. And take some time to reflect what it really means, those, those who gave all for all the liberties that we have. Uh, thank everybody for coming. It's good to see everybody. And that'll be it.
Uh, not much, Mister Chairman. Uh, yes, have a happy and safe Memorial Day. We can see Dominion doing their work on Middle Mile right now. There's a lot of fiber going up on poles all over the county. Um, so looking forward to really getting this project moving along, um, and, and getting updates along the way.
Happy Memorial Day to everybody, and we agree with Mister Miskowski, this came to a mom's house, of course, they got stuck in the swamp, but. Uh, they are pulling wires, so they're winding it up, so hopefully they'll. Get it in there by the February deadline, and then I did have a question maybe to work maybe with the next time or something, but. People have been complaining about people using like Holly Road as cut-throughs. Do we have any authority over VDOT? Cause VDOT. They call VDOT, VDOT tells us it's a supervised, but I've never been told that we have authority to put up signs or speed bumps or speed limit signs. I thought, I mean, they're telling us we do it, we say they do it, so I don't know, what is the real policy?
When we, when it's been requested before, I think, uh, liberty, uh, what's liberty? Um, they had a request and we talked with VDOT about it. It is a request from the county, but then it goes to a VDOT review. It has, I think there was a petition talked about in that.
And I don't think they ever did the petition.
It's, VDOT's recommendation was to see what law enforcement can.
Yeah.
At that time, it was about speed.
I was told to talk to the sheriff's department, generally, they said it wasn't their problem either, because we don't have enough deputies to just drive by.
If I, if I may, I hate to add anything to this, but. That jogged my memory. I had requested, I think they did a, uh, study on Quentin Church Road. Part of it to be reduced to forty-five all the way through there. And I forgot to ask Mister McKnight when he was here. Uh, did, was anything ever done there? I know that they did do, I think the sheriff put up the. Whatever it is, the sign that tells you how fast you're going. I don't think VDOT ever did a study though. And people are still complaining about a Quentin Church Road.
We'll find it.
Steven, did you finish? Yeah, that was it. I just thought, if we need to do that, does it have to be a majority of the board to bring it up, or can a member bring it up too? Ask VDOT to look into it, or does it have to be the majority of the board, or?
I think it was a letter from the board, but then we'll check back.
Alright, get that, and then uh, that's all I have. Thanks, man. Alright, now I'd like to wish everybody a safe and fun Memorial Day weekend. Like Stuart said, remembering what it, what it's really about. Uh, and your reflections. Um, one thing, Madam Treasurer, do you think we can get a report on the collection? From the sales of property and some meeting in the near future? Okay, and her answer was yes. And just to remind everybody, the electoral board met. And the staggered terms that will go this election to two years will be District One and District Five. And that's all I have. Uh, do I have a motion?
Mister Chairman, according to section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, eight, eight of the Code of Virginia. I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to consult with legal counsel on the King William County Public Schools wastewater treatment project. Requiring uh, the provision of legal service, the legal advice by council.
Second. Any discussion, Chris?
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Mister Morin.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi, looks we'll be back shortly. Folks, I call this meeting back to order. Mister Chairman, move, we reconvene in an open session.
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Mister Morin.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi, Mister Chairman, move SR one.
Mister Morin.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Alright, now we just need. We've done everything else.
Mister Chairman, uh, af- after discussion and advice by council. Uh, county staff would make a recommendation that a motion be presented. That is in the form of a, of approving, of approving an emergency procurement with Bowman. On behalf of the school board pursuant to procurement policy, section two dash four, uh, letter F.
I'll make that motion, Mister.
Second. Have a motion, second, any discussion. Chris.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Mister Morin.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Thank you.
I have another motion.
Mister Motion. Mister Chairman, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garber. Mister Morin.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi, meeting is adjourned.